So the meeting is hereby called to order and we will turn it over directly to Mr. Mitchell to give us information regarding our requests.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, in motion to to call the meeting back.
To call back from recess, yes, do we have a motion to call our meeting out of recess?
I move that we call the budget and finance meeting out of recess.
Okay, it has been, a motion has been made in second at all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so now we are out of recess and now, Mr. Mitchell, you can tell us how we are all going to be so pleased.
So Counselor, on Friday, we submitted our responses to the operating budget, so I am on and Mr. Lester Smith is on. We have any more discussions or any more questions that we can pretty much queue up right now? And if I have to get other staff on, just give me time to get them on. If we have anything that I cannot answer, or Mr. Smith can I ask?
Madam Chair, I have a question about an operating item that wasn't addressed.
Okay, Counselor Williams?
We started to talk about, I believe, but I couldn't hear because of all the wind. But they, in the budget, there is fifty thousand dollars allocated to reach calming, or traffic calming, rather. And is where, how is that going to be used? And is there an ability to use that or match that with neighborhood funds to put in those traffic calming measures? Or is that fifty thousand dollars already spoken for?
Well, you you pretty much said it because this item was on budget and finance before you got on. So right now, that money is to leverage funding between that pot of money and the Neighborhood Association that wants to use some type of traffic calming, trapping speed bumps. I think Mr. Fowler said something about blinking stop signs and curb signs. So that's to leverage that fund, so you know, we won't have the neighborhoods out here by themselves. So we're saying we'll put some money and put some money behind it.
Okay, and then what's the process of assessing that after it's voted on and passed tomorrow?
So he did say that he had a list already, but we're still trying to flesh out the total process. I can try and get him back on to see if he can.
No, 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 no need to waste time, but I do want to say this, let's not overthink it. Is the list something that's available to us that you could email me, Chaz?
Yes, sir.
Or he could email me or somebody.
No, we'll, I mean, we'll send it to the entire council, but he did say he had a list.
Because they completed a study in my district and now the only thing that's left is to implement it.
Was that, that was the Apple study?
No, that is something that Counselor O'Quinn and myself did pay for. But the, it was a study done for Crest, Crest Hill Road. And there was a, and then they sent out the things for everybody to vote and it passed or whatever. So now the only thing left to do is for them to actually purchase and install the speed pumps. And so I want to know what, what I can do to help the neighborhood out with that, with part of that fifty thousand dollars to leverage it.
Just to interject about the larger, you know, conversation. Director Fowler, with regard to scaling up the Department of Transportation's traffic calming program, you know, he states that the number one limitation is simply staffing at the moment and that they need to, really need to add another traffic systems engineer at a likely salary ranging from fifty-five thousand to seventy thousand with benefits. So just keep that in consideration. That doesn't have anything to do with the specific project that you were talking about, Hunter. But in regards to the list of a hundred-plus locations that the Department of Transportation is trying to work through to address traffic calming, that's a major limitation that they're looking at is just having another traffic engineer on staff to help with the process.
And we are working with that through HR and finance, so we're aware of the positioning.
So is that position budgeted for in this upcoming fiscal budget we're about to vote on?
It's not, that's why I said we're working through that.
Okay, that's what, what does that mean? All right, thank you, that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, any, any other council members?
Counselor Williams, did you want James to expound on the, kind of like the grant process we were trying to incorporate? Because he's on right now.
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead, James.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, hear the question.
It's just the traffic calming, the process and the plan that we have for it.
Sure, Chaz, you want me to review the notes that I had given to you? Okay, yeah, so there's, if we're going to scale up the program, then there's kind of three boxes, I think, to check. So one of those, which I think you guys were just talking about, is adding an engineer to the team that can follow up on those, coordinate with neighborhoods, produce the recommendations and kind of follow those through the process. And so that's the position that you guys were just discussing. Additionally, the second is, you know, a small seed budget, I would say, to purchase some of the devices or partner with the neighborhoods to purchase some of the devices. And so while it's not a huge budget, it's certainly enough to get started. The fifty thousand dollars is what we're proposing to get started with. And then the third item is probably a little bit more challenging, but it's a scaled up available budget for labor installation. So whether it's installing the signs or the speed, pump speed cushions come with a pretty significant labor involvement. That'll become our backlog if we're able to scale up on the engineer and the budget, but not so much on that labor budget. And so what I put in my memo to Chaz Mitchell was just maybe two hundred thousand dollars to get started. So that's either internal labor or external labor, it could go kind of either way. But those are the three buckets necessary to scale up that operation in full. Checking any one of those helps, but that's probably the most comprehensive way to begin to scale it up.
May I ask a question?
Please, who is that?
This is Parker. So the fifty thousand I saw, I was trying to catch the budget and finance, so it's the fifty thousand.
Pick it up from the post office.
Okay, Miss Kidd, Miss Kidd. Hey, Miss Kidd, Miss Kidd.
Let me go, hold on a minute. Yes, yes, yes.
Can you mute your phone, please?
My phone is.
We were, yeah, if you could mute your phone, okay. All right. I guess, Mr. Fowler, the fifty thousand for the, where are those going to be? Are those going to be spread out throughout the city? Or how much is that fifty thousand for traffic calmer? Where's, kind of, where's the hotspots?
Yeah, that's a good question and Counselor Smith had a similar question earlier. The, because this is kind of a new conversation, it's not something we had budgeted for, say, you know, weeks ago. It's something that's come as a result of just the increased interest in this topic. We don't have specific locations identified just yet. But to your question, absolutely, our intent would be to not just focus on one area of the city, but absolutely to work with neighborhoods across the city. And we're trying to work through our queue of requested streets. So that queue currently, we have about a hundred and fifty streets that we're evaluating. And so we would just kind of start through that list. But the idea would be to partner with neighborhoods as much as possible on those costs.
Okay, so for example, what's the cost? And I don't know, just, so you've got a hundred and fifty streets. So the fifty thousand that's been appropriated, how many of that hundred and fifty, how much, how, you know, what's the stretch that fifty thousand would do approximately a hundred streets, twenty-five streets?
Yeah, so let's say that if we were going to use that money to partner on streets, you know, fifty-fifty, so that gets us to a one hundred thousand dollar total budget. You know, I'd say a typical street, and the solutions for streets can vary quite a bit. From, you know, it could be signage and striping, or the most expensive solution is with speed humps or speed cushions. So, you know, maybe ten to fifteen thousand per street for kind of the more significant repairs to purchase those items. And so if we have a hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, that's, you know, ten, ten-ish maybe streets.
So that's if the neighborhood is going to put up, if they have funding, say, if they have funding. Okay, are there any grants through ALDOT for this?
No, sir, not through ALDOT, and I'm not, I'm not aware of any grants for this kind of a program.
So we've got ten streets, potentially ten streets. So that just seems like one per district?
Potentially, yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to say in regard to this, you know, Counselor Woods had a proposal in his committee for red light and stop sign cameras. And that's another means of slowing down the speeding through our neighborhoods and also generating a source of funding. Maybe to put speed bumps in places where maybe there aren't any stop signs or traffic signals. But the red light cameras, you know, we have to have the legislature's approval. I know y'all remember that we requested that this year, but we didn't get any help. So, and we were just trying to get the option to do that. But I think Counselor Woods was on to something because the red light camera vendors and stop sign camera vendors provide all the equipment. We don't have to pay for it. They get a cut of what they earn. And so that is another thing we need to start seriously looking at because we don't have the money to fix all these streets with speed bump bumps because they're so expensive.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
It's just something for us to add to our arsenal of things to, of weapons to control the uncontrollable drivers in our city.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay, well, I'm trying to, I'm just curious as to how that list is going to be developed? Because I think everyone has received calls for, you know, for traffic control, so. You know, how long do you think it'll take, Mr. Fowler, to develop the list and to have, have them installed? How long does that normally take?
A couple of months. So it's a, to get started, it's been a long process just because it's a new, it's a new process and service that we've been, you know, have not offered previously. However, if we are able to add an engineer to help facilitate the process, I think that will speed it up. And maybe it takes sixty to ninety days for that person to be identified and come on board. And so I think to receive a request, which we've received requests now, you know, a year ago, that we're working on today. I guess I hate to give a specific timeline because each case is probably a little different and gets reviewed by the committee of folks. But as we scale up, I think the process probably get a little bit faster. But I can tell you now that in our list of a hundred and fifty streets, we've got some at the front of that list that have been on that list for a year.
Okay. So he's going to take the first ten, I'm just trying to get an idea of how.
I think. Yeah. I, I think we're very much in the very beginning stages. And so we're kind of coming from having no resources to now having maybe a little bit of resources. And so that'll help us escalate the speed just a little bit and move forward a little bit faster.
I like that, escalate the speed. Well, I will say that we did a, in District Three and District Five, we partnered on Thirty-Ninth Street. But all of the solutions we had back then were bumping out curbs and things like that. And it was very expensive, you know, because it was basically a street improvement project to create bump outs. And I forget what those are called, bump out is not the professional term. But, you know, it was very expensive. So these speed humps are certainly less expensive than hiring people to come redo all the concrete and the paving on your streets. But it's still expensive, those, those humps are really expensive. So anyway, so that's, you can tell that's a big issue for the council. Does anybody else have specific issues they want to ask about or comment on?
Yeah, I just wanted to catch Mr. Fowler while he was on. And what is, what is the current cost of the speed cushions?
So to do a full width speed pump, so that runs across the entire length of the road. So those are about five thousand dollars each. To do the speed cushions, which is probably what we will move more towards going forward, probably closer to three thousand dollars per location. And then our department so far has been providing the labor to install those. If we escalate the program pretty quickly, that would very quickly become the bottleneck. We would not have the capacity to do too much more of those. But, but to answer your question, for the full speed humps, I believe that's around five thousand. And the speed cushions for locations, about three thousand.
Where, where does your, like, current capacity, like, max out at? Or I guess, for instance, how many could you install per month without kind of pulling away from other areas?
Counselor Woods, can you turn up your sound because it's very difficult to hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
I think to answer your question, currently with our staffing capacity, I think we could probably work on one street every two months without maybe people kind of noticing a difference in level of service or responsiveness with current staffing capacity.
And you say I work on a street, are you saying like one speed cushion or multiple if they're on the same street?
So I guess I would assume that a typical street might require, say, three devices, you know, three, three locations. And so if we did one street every two months, I don't think anybody would necessarily notice that impact. But, but more than that, would pretty quickly have a noticeable impact on our other services.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think easing into it, kind of like we are, is probably the best bet in that. Waking up and it being two hundred out there, kind of doing it slower and seeing the issues. But I will say, we've worked pretty closely with Mr. Fowler over the last, I don't know, couple of years, probably much closer than he would like, but we've got a pretty good feel for the process. And it does help if you kind of get in the process and get your neighborhood leaders to learn that process and expedite the parts that, because certain parts of the process will be on the neighborhood to complete or on the community to do. And so if you can turn those around, it gets done quicker. But I have made a lot of process, like, I really do appreciate having a process now. Like I said, this is still new and we actually had the opportunity to put them out. And so thank you for that. And then lastly, are these funds going to be in a capital line item? Or will they be, you know, will they lapse at the end of the year if they're not spent?
They'll be in a capital line item.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fowler, can you tell us what you installed on Carlisle Road? Are those speed tables, speed humps or speed?
That's a great question. So the two devices that we've installed, so on Wynwood Road and on Carlisle Road are the same, same device. Those are speed humps. And that continuously goes all the way across the full width of the road. So that's a speed hump, a speed cushion. So a typical road like a Wynwood or a Carlisle might require, it's three separate devices. And so there's actually a wheel path for large vehicles like ambulances or fire trucks that can go through. So that's what I'm referring to as a speed cushion. It's really a set of three devices in a row. And that's kind of the lesser expensive option. So we, and we are about to install some of those this summer in North Tittusville along a roadway that we're trying to slow down cars and make a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly roadway.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn, did I see you?
Yes, yes, so I'd like to touch on the microtransit project. And you mentioned in your memo that what's currently budgeted plus the amount left over from the previous year would take us out about six months for, well, six to seven months for the current service area. So that's good to know. I think there is a lot of interest in expanding the service area. So I guess we need some guidance from you and from the administration around what would be required for us to do an expansion. You know, depending on which counselor you talk to, that expansion might be, look a little different. But I think that there's a lot of us that would, you know, like to be talking about expansion rather than just getting us, you know, seven months down the road with what we have in place already. So, so again, from my point of view, I think the desire is to have a conversation around what is required to service more of the city with Birmingham on demand rather than, you know, holding the status quo and getting, getting us seven months into fiscal year 2022. So I guess the question is, is how do we get to that conversation? What's that dollar number? Who do I need to talk to? So on and so forth.
So, so kind of, I think that's just a conversation that we're almost having weekly with myself, James and leadership at the BJCTA with the whole possibility of them taking over the microtransit service. We'll definitely keep you up to date and report back to the Transportation Committee. But anything that we can just show you in proposal form of expansion or the whole takeover. But I think we, we're on the same page about microtransit and transit in conjunction in one conversation.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, when, when you say you're on the same page.
Okay, who's, who's speaking, please?
I, Hunter.
Oh, Hunter, Hunter, yes.
I just had a follow-up question, but when, when you say you're on the same page, Chaz, does that mean you're on the same page with us or the BJCTA?
I mean, it's, it's going to be a group effort between the council and the administration and the BJCTA. Am I, am I reading your question wrong?
No, you just said, I think we're on the same page. I was just wondering, like, if you meant that, like, the BJCTA had already had conversations and they're on page.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'll just interject, you know, there is a conversation at the BJCTA. They've hired a group of consultants that, you know, want, are, have at least proposed to use microtransit as a solution for revamping the BJCTA's operations. So that is one consideration. But the thing that everybody needs to realize is that we are missing out on public transit dollars, federal public transit dollars because the mileage that Birmingham on this accumulating is not counting towards what we can ask the federal DOT to credit back us. We're, you know, under the current configuration, we're just, pity of Birmingham is providing that service to its citizens. But if we, that service was under the umbrella of our local public transit provider, then we could be drawing down some federal public transportation dollars to help support that.
Okay, is that anything else? Do any other members of the council have any questions or comments regarding the responses we received or responses we did not receive? Okay, well, I have a question about responses that we did not receive. And one of them is Rick Woodfield. The mayor told us in our council meeting that he was bringing all the organizations back to their 2020 allocations. But mysteriously, Rick Woodfield did not receive what they received in 2020. And so they need to be brought back up to speed. I understand they've been told that they can apply for rescue money or something. But this is an organization of mostly retired people who love baseball. They are not professional grant writers, they are not, well, they're very nice people. But they need their money. And then if somebody in the administration wants to apply for rescue money and get additional funds, whatever, they need to be brought back up to speed. Like the mayor told us, everyone was being. I think that that's an important thing because they're maintaining an asset that belongs to the city of Birmingham and that we don't maintain. So it needs help. And it's only sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars that y'all shorted them. So, Mr. Mitchell, you're muted and I don't know what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was talking, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll work through that with them. So I know that the agreement with them was a little convoluted because that it also included money for them for the, for the utility cost that the city is paying. I'll give your note to the mayor about trying to increase them, but I don't know if that level will be the exact same because we have to cut something for them to get up to that amount.
Well, if you had done what he said you were going to do, which is bring everybody back to their twenty allocations. And I will point out again, this is a city-owned property. For us to pay the utilities is not a shocking thing in order to keep Rick Woodfield going. Because I think the alternative is probably to let it fall in, like we do some other things we own. So that is one, Rick Wood and the zoo. You know, in order to move forward with a, you know, a kind of a win-win solution, it strikes me that we need to do something about the cut to the zoo. Because every one of those animals that lives there expects to eat every single day. And somebody has to pay for all that. So I think at the very least, we need a commitment on allowing them to keep the tax revenues that they generate at the zoo, kind of like we do economic development. If you produce it, you know, you've got a cut. Well, they need, they need something because a half million dollars to operate probably our biggest attraction in Birmingham is not enough money.
Yes, ma'am, I know the mayor is in conversation with their leadership on, I think he had a meeting with them recently. I'll find out what.
I need to hear a commitment. I mean, I, we had a conversation is not really good enough for our, you know, one of our major assets in the city.
Here's where, if I can intervene, Madam Chair. Here's where we, here's where we are. As you know, tomorrow, we. As you know, tomorrow, we have a committee, the whole meeting scheduled in the morning at ten o'clock. So I think it'll be good for us work through whatever. And then tomorrow at ten, that we have another recap. So that we can kind of get all on the same page on various topics that we're going to discuss, I'm sure, tonight and might come up between now and tomorrow. And, and I think that way, this is one of them. But, you know, this will probably take some conversations between now and tomorrow. And we'll just kind of hash that out at committed the whole at ten o'clock. Which means that we'll probably have to recess and probably recess for a while and use the committee of the whole as a, as a follow-up to your meeting tonight to get some clarity on several different items.
Well, that sounds good. Does anyone else have anything before we look at the possibility of adjournment?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Yes, I want to follow up to the response I got on the six-day security guard for the park, for parking wreck. And so just wanted to clarify that I wasn't, I wasn't requesting sworn personnel. And so, but basically, security, the same type of security guards that we have at a lot of our, you know, museum of art or other facilities, basically just security guards. Mainly because like I said, sworn personnel probably, probably be needed at BPD first. And so I think we can kind of feel the specific need that the parks have with non-sworn security personnel. So just wanted to, but I was saying that it would probably be in BPD's budget. But they would be non-sworn security guards.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
Mrs. Abbott, I do have a question. I know our meeting this afternoon was to talk about our prior workshop dealing with the operating budget, just any ideas. I know some of us have submitted some follow-up questions from our meeting on Friday regarding capital improvements. Would those just be provided back to us by tomorrow? Or I think some of mine were just very simple, asking some clarification on things. But any idea when those, or I don't know if other councils had any, if I was the only one.
We, we had a pretty, pretty good list. Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Smith, do we know when, when responses will be ready? Will it be by the, before the ten o'clock meeting in the morning, maybe at midnight tonight or?
Well, as pertaining, I, I haven't really, I took notes. But if you can send me something, I can give it back to staff. But usually the, the operating budget is what's on the agenda tomorrow. But the capital is always going to be an ongoing conversation because it's capital. But, and we will give you answers once we, like I said, I, I have the questions that I wrote down. And I think I did okay with transcribing, but if you can just send me something out and then we'll get staff assigned to it properly.
Okay, I know several council members sent in things, but a few council members did not. And, you know, when, when the rest of us are interpreting your issues, we might get them wrong. You know, so sending something in is really a good exercise. But, you know.
Yes, because we, we are in receipt of the, I think it was three districts that submitted questions about the capital.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to round everybody up who has an interest in, in having their issues sent to you because I know several of us have, have questions. And I, and we know that we don't have to approve the cap, the capital budget tomorrow, but the operating budget is, is pretty important in order that we keep operating. Yes, Dr. O'Quinn?
Did have a, a question. Our previous workshop. So I had asked about the one million dollars for Birmingham City Schools. And I see that in the response that there's, you know, the, the intended purposes for mental health counseling and just generally easing the transition back to live classroom friends. Did the, has Birmingham City Schools, you know, elaborated on that anymore? I mean, are they adding a certain number of counselors or?
What I, I do, I will get with Dr. Sullivan to see the exact breakout of the use of the million dollars for the wraparound services. I'll get that to you. I, I'll, I'll send him a note tonight.
Okay, yeah, just.
And of course, that, that agreement would have to come before the council anyway for approval. So I'm pretty sure they'll flesh out everything that they, the total plan for the one million dollars.
All right, good point. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I just would say. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I know, I was, I had a question about the possibility of parking wreck having a capital budget to address all the parks. I know we have in the capital budget just individual parks. But that was a possible item for conversation from the mayor's office. Or is there a reason why it's not like that?
Well, I can only speak on what the current capital budget was basically from a bond issue. So if we wanted to span on new projects for park or we will, we'll have to either ask permission of the council to photo bind or a warrant or close out projects. I think there was a lot of committee's questions about projects that need to be closed out so we can keep those within the same category of, because if you close out a street, you can't use the street money for parks. It has to stay in the same category.
Yeah. Okay. And it is true that in the past, you know, almost all of our capital improvements have been done through the sinking fund through a bond issue. And of course, with our bond rating going down, you know, it's hard to feel comfortable doing a bond issue when you're, when you're, you know, you're going to pay more for the money you borrow. So I assume that that is one reason that the administration has not come to us and said, hey, let's do a bond issue. And then there's the other issue of there are time limits on spending that bond money. And the city has failed to spend its money, its bond money in a timely fashion. And I know all of you remember that we had to, you know, we had to, you know, pay up because we had gotten way behind on spending some of that money. And I believe the rule is three years. We have three years to spend the money. And I think somebody was pointing out, we had some nineteen ninety-six bond money still listed on the book. And, you know, we're expected to actually borrow the money and then spend it. But sometimes we, we seem to be unable to do that. But bond issues, the sinking fund is the key to capital improvements for the City of Birmingham. It has been in the past. Maybe we'll get rich and everything will be better. The feds will help us. Okay. Anybody else before we go?
Just, just real quick, I would just say tomorrow might be a long day, so just be prepared.
Back a launch.
Yeah, just, it might be a long day. So we might take lengthy breaks in between. So in between when we go in at nine thirty, well, I'm just talking now because I'm not trying to, but also, but then, once we get a committee of the whole. So it could be a long day, so everybody just plan accordingly.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's see, Mr. Williams, are you on point for our adjournment? I guess you don't have to be. I guess this is extension of our budget and finance. So ladies, do we have a motion?
I move for adjournment.
Okay.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye. So we will see y'all in the morning.